Welcome to the Acton Planning Board Meeting of March 2, 2023. Time is 6 o'clock. And I guess we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, where we nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start by reviewing the minutes from February 16.
You have them on different colored paper?
I don't. Alright, so it looks like I'm just looking for a motion on the minutes.
Are you okay?
I think so.
I move the approve the minutes for the board meeting of 16th February, 2023, as written.
All second. All in favor?
Chelsea's standing because she wasn't present.
Right. And then we did, most recently, we did do a sidewalk on Harper Road. I didn't know if John, if you wanted to...
Yeah, what'd you say? This is for the child daycare thing?
Daycare, she couldn't make it tonight, so we pushed her out till next week, our next meeting. Told her that she was gonna need to contact a site evaluator to verify that her septic, because I'm not gonna take that responsibility. So, we can put on a site evaluator and have it approved. So, she's kinda waiting on that. So, the question was, is when to schedule a public hearing? Depending on, kinda, we don't wanna put her in a timeframe which that we're in right now. If you schedule a public hearing now. But she'll be back in, on the 16th to discuss on the sidewalk, pretty much, if you guys had any issues. So, Ryan, you were there? And Gavin and Adam and Chris, and Chelsea wasn't present either.
Well, we're not ready to sc... is it a...
No, we're not ready at all.
Yeah.
No, we're not even close to being ready.
Yeah, we didn't have a completed application.
No, we're not even close. But we wanted her to come, you know, that was one of the things that, just keep her moving forward is what we wanna do. She just can't make it tonight. So, we'll deal with that on the 16th, as well as the PEPINS. And I have somebody come, wants to do an application for greatest practice. Oh no, I pushed him out to the April 6th, so never mind. We're gonna deal with those two on the 16th. Tonight, I really wanna, I gotta get these ordinances or these warrants changed or approved so that I can get them sent to town attorney, just haven't reviewed. I have, if everybody can make it, hopefully they can. I have put in the scheduling to have a workshop next Thursday. Because what's gonna happen is I gotta get these warrant, these articles to the warrant finance next Friday, no later. So, I'm gonna get them, if we can get them finalized today, to get them sent to the attorney tomorrow, and then I can get them back by next Thursday. Then we can just, if there's any kind of changes that needs to be made, minute, and then we can vote on them to move them forward. That's really what I need to kinda push for. So, that's why I went ahead and scheduled a workshop, just in case, for that. Unless you've, well, they still have to get reviewed, so I can really, I don't know if we voted on them before or after they were reviewed last time? I think you review them and then vote on them, or vote to have them reviewed? I don't remember.
Well, we could vote when they're ready to go to legal. We could say, yes, they're ready to go.
Well, they're gonna have to go tomorrow, so we're gonna, we have to, we have to have them done tonight.
Alright, well, I did take...
What's driving the finance committee date? I mean, every year I've been here, they need it in December.
Right, so I have to, I can go down to my desk. So, technically, they're supposed to have them by the 9th, which would be this Friday. I bought another week because we got the schedule late, let's put it that way. So, when I finally got the actual schedule that they wanted, it was in the middle of February. So, we don't have any major changes, we have...
How long is that committee given to review in the timeline?
I have to meet, or the board and myself have to meet with them one week, I think, on the 20th. We have to meet with them on the 20th, I believe.
And when does it go to the selectmen?
So...
Well, we have to have a town...
So, you have to have a public hearing for it, 30 days prior to the town meeting.
Right.
So, they're gonna look at it, the selectmen are gonna look at it, we'll have a public hearing, and however that works. I don't have my ordinance book on me right now, can I borrow yours? Please, thank you.
It's alright, I just, you know, it's...
No, I, John, I don't disagree with you.
We get driven around by arbitrary gates that are not based in any factual need.
Alright, so we'll go through them, you wanna start with some of the easy ones first?
Yeah, so we have four, three really easy ones, and then the one that we're dealing with with the mineral extractions. Well, I say three, we have the zoning one that you guys are looking to delete a couple paragraphs from, so, which one would you like to charge? What we're gonna do is I'm gonna pull them up online, and we can do, even do the corrections right here, if there's any that need to be made.
That's the easiest one.
So, the easiest one is the newspaper notification change of, so... Zoom in a little bit here.
And so, last, not last week, the last meeting we determined seven days.
Yep.
Even with that paper gives you, you don't lose a week like we used to.
Correct. And so, we've struck in the 10 days and changed it just to the seven. So, highlighted and underlined, seven.
And this is the only place in the zoning ordinance we need that changed to effectively do that.
That pertains to the public hearing, which is what we seem to run into more with our planning board's situation. The other one was zoning board changes, zoning board of appeals, which, that usually, that's a lengthy process. So, the only one that really was in here for this situation was in 6.6, 3.4.
I think that one's okay. Never used it, hadn't waxed on it. Are we moving on to the next one?
Yep.
Yeah, proposed amendments relative to conditional use permits. And John had the change to add the word new in before the word operator in the third line down. Which I think this one's all set to go to legal, too.
This is the existing conditional uses or structure? Is that the one we're talking about?
Yes. Yeah, 6.6, 3.2.
Okay. I like the way this is going so far, guys, let's keep up the speed.
Tried to make as few mistakes as possible.
And then the solar one.
Well, I did spend quite a bit of time trying to chop this thing down and make it a lot shorter.
Okay.
So, we can kinda walk through that if you'd like.
Yeah.
So, the first thing I was looking at was the definitions here. I think we should get these definitions on page 32 is where they would fit in with the other definitions.
Yep.
And I kinda felt like maybe we should...
Mimic those?
Yeah, make it, instead of making it look like it's contiguous with 5.29, just place it in, maybe we'll put the definition for sludge above the four definitions and the definition for spring water extraction below. Just so it looks like it's going in with the other definitions.
Okay, so you want me to add, alright, sludge?
Just, yeah, just format it so it looks like it's part of the...
Right, right, so it's part of the actual page.
Because it kinda looks like it's part of the...
Yep, like by its own.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then 5.29, solar energy generation systems, I added an S and a colon. And then I think we can strike the next paragraph entirely. Strike the next one? Yeah, well, I mean, I think we should kinda review it before you change it on the screen, so we don't get too screwed off. Make sure everybody's on board with the changes I've got here. And then we'll be moving down there.
So, I understand trying to shorten, I'm all for that, but doesn't that first paragraph just establish what we're doing here?
Well, I don't know if we need to... The biggest problem with this thing is that it's redundant, and there's a lot of extra information that's already in the zoning ordinance, it's just kind of... There's a lot of verbiage, and that was one of the complaints we got at town meeting, was that this thing was just too wordy, people didn't wanna read it. Yeah, but I'm not sold on any one of the particular changes I have, I have a lot of changes, so...
Yeah, no, okay.
I just tried to, it's five, five pages right now? I think I cut at least a page out of it. You know, I feel like we don't need to say that, that we have standards just to ensure these things are safe, and that's why we have standards. But I'd be fine with leaving it in there if people wanna leave that paragraph in there.
No, let's move on, it's just... This is critical.
Yep, so then, moving down, it said general standards, I got rid of that, and I put just, where it says A, I got rid of the beginning of that, and just put solar energy generation systems must obtain all applicable permits from the Acton Code Officer in the state of Maine, including but not limited to building and electrical permits. So, that was kind of how I started it, after solar energy generation systems. And then the next one, accessory solar systems, medium solar farms, large solar farms shall be subject to standards in 511 Good Neighbor standards, we don't need that in there because...
Hold on a second, Gavin, I lost you a second ago. So, you don't need B?
Yeah, I'm gonna strike B as well.
And, but you're not striking A?
No, I changed A.
Okay, so what did you change A to?
Instead of saying accessory solar energy systems, medium solar farms and large solar farms, I cut that out and I just put solar energy generation systems. Must obtain all applicable permits from the Acton Code Enforcement Officer in the state of Maine, including but not limited to building and electrical permits. So, that was kind, that's kind of our introduction underneath 5.29. Okay?
Okay.
And then on the next page, it's used to say, let's see if I can open up this one, I have it marred here.
So, did you scratch B altogether?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the Good Neighbor standards are applicable to all development and everything in the zoning ordinance, so it's kind of redundant to put it in there. If you guys wanna have it in there, I'm fine with it. And I can go, what we can do is just go through it, everybody can kinda noodle with it, and then we can go through it on the screen afterwards if you want. So, we're not trying to do both at the same time. So, then what is noted on the next page here, 5.292, I've got that changed to 5.291. And I changed it to read solar energy systems operating, generating power for onsite consumption shall be considered accessory to the principal use. And I cut out, or to offset electrical use of onsite accounts.
Shall be accessory?
Shall be considered accessory.
Shall be considered.
Which is verbiage that's already in there, I just took the middle out of that one.
Okay.
Do you think that's redundant, Gavin? Offset electrical use of onsite accounts?
I feel like it's definitely redundant for these accessory energy systems. Because they're mostly just going to people's homes. But if we wanna leave it in there, because, I mean, I feel like for, on a bigger site, they might be generating power to offset electrical use on another site adjacent there or something like that, like another business that's near the site. But for the accessory systems, it's mostly people's homes. I don't know, I, like I said, I'm not sold on any of these, I just try, I just wanna make the thing shorter.
So, you were saying on 5.29, I'm just gonna make some changes in here right now as we're going.
Well, I just wanna make sure the board's on, in agreement before we actually change the document on the screen, because...
So, this paragraph is a generic paragraph, or is this paragraph talking to the accessory, the small ones, you know, the house?
Yeah, this first, all the way up to here, 5.2, see where it says 5.292? I changed it to 5.291.
Right.
That's all about accessory, then 5.293, must have been 3, I changed to 2, and that one's, and that one's for the medium and large.
Well, on the back, on the page previous to this, there's a 5.291 for general standards.
Yeah, but that now, you changed that one.
I got rid of that entirely.
Oh.
I just, 5.291, general standards, I crossed that right out. I just had 5.29, solar energy generation systems. Then, what said A, I just said solar energy generation systems must obtain all applicable permits from the Acton Code Office in the state of Maine, including but not limited to building and electrical permits. That's kind of the introduction, solar energy generation systems. And then we'd move on to accessory, and there's a few sub-paragraphs under accessory, and then we move on to medium and large with their subheadings. So, and then I have, so on the second page, 5.29A, I just crossed out a little bit of this one, solar energy systems accessory shall be permitted wherever accessory uses are permitted and shall conform to the standards of the applicable district. You know, otherwise, we had accessory in there three times in one sentence, didn't really seem...
Very redundant, yeah.
Necessary. Just make it easier to read. Say that one more time, Gavin.
I just deleted it right there.
Oh, you did, okay.
So, it's just gonna confirm, conform to the standards of applicable district. Districts, or district, district.
District, because it's, well, it could be either one, because they're law, it may be in multiple districts.
Kind of that or go S?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, done?
Okay, then B I left alone, which was the maximum height. It's a little bit longer than I like, but it's okay. C, roof mounted, are not subject to site plan review, I just crossed that right out, because...
Get rid of it completely.
Accessory solar generation systems. The accessory ones, if you look in the land use chart, are pretty much CEO review. Not site plan review anyway, so we've already got it in the chart.
The note says generally require CEO review, except that site plan review is required for ground-mounted systems that are accessory to uses other than single and two-family dwellings.
That's right.
In our ordinance right now, it sets everybody at condition, for ground-mounted as conditional use.
Well, that's the new proposed note that I just read.
Number, note four, right.
Does the board wanna strike that whole C?
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, okay, yeah, so C is not...
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to, it's kinda like...
It's covered by the...
If they wanna put solar panels on their roof, we don't have to tell them that they don't need to do site plan review to do that.
Change D to C?
Yep, and D I left alone. Okay, then 5.293, I changed to 5.29...
Two?
Two. And I cut out a couple words in that one as well. Solar energy systems generating power for offsite consumption shall not be considered accessory use, are subject to site plan review, and shall conform to the standards of solar farm medium or solar farm large as listed below. So, in the first line, yeah.
Remove or to offset electrical use of offsite accounts.
Yeah, I removed that, and then after accessory use, I took the verbiage from the next line and put it in there, are subject to site plan review. And I put, I got rid of the, what is that, A?
So, you're getting rid of A, and you're just getting, so you have, so you have medium or solar farm large as listed below, but then I'll get rid of listed below and put are subject to site plan review?
Well, there are still gonna be some standards below.
Okay, so leave listed below?
Yeah, yeah.
So, just read that to me, the...
5.29.2, solar energy systems generating power for offsite consumptions, consumption, shall not be considered an accessory use, are subject to site plan review, and shall conform to the standards of solar farm medium or solar farm large as listed below.
I think that, who's that company we used? I think that...
North Star?
Yeah. You know, I'm okay with the, just your house or whatever, the smaller ones, but I think when you get into medium and large, there are other, you know, yes, you're generating electricity for offsite, but there are other things, are they selling or using that money to defray? I mean, I just don't know if we're throwing out the baby.
Okay, well, let's, we can leave that in there.
For the, for the bigger ones, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really... Okay, yeah, I'm not really sure what that means.
Yeah, as I'm sitting here reading it now.
But, I mean, it says solar energy systems generating power for offsite consumption, pretty much covers it, because it says offsite right there. Or to offset electrical use of offsite accounts, I mean, either way, it's offsite. But I don't, I don't, I mean...
Well, I mean, we can, we can, if we can't articulate what it is, then we can take it out, I guess. I just, you know, we're under the gun here. It would have been a good question to ask North Star, but...
Yeah. Absolutely, I just feel like thi- this thing... Yeah, alright. So, we, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with either way, it's just a suggestion on how to make the thing more streamlined and...
Well, like I just said, Gavin, if we can't, we're not sure what it is, then we probably shouldn't have it in there anyway.
Yeah, I feel like just saying generate, you know, and a solar energy system generating power for offsite consumption, whether it's being consumed by the business that's next door, or it's going right into the grid, either way, it's offsite, and it's not gonna be considered accessory use. It's kind of my feeling, you know? We can try it, I mean, if...
Yeah, yeah, no, like I said, I couldn't explain it fast anyway, so...
Yeah.
So, I cut out that section, and goes offsite consumption shall not be considered an accessory use, are sub, are subject to site plan review, and shall conform to the standards of solar farms, solar farm medium or solar farm large as listed below. And then we're gonna get rid of A, all of it?
Yeah, because I kinda just moved part of it up into the other paragraph.
And then A, does A stay the same, application requirements for solar farm?
I got rid of that altogether.
You got rid of it altogether?
Yeah, because I feel like it's just redundant.
Yeah, is this one right here, just application for, it's gone?
Maybe we can just leave it as A, application requirements, and then we go down to the one through whatever.
Yeah, because that explains what those other numbers are.
Yeah, you know.
So, applications requirement, semicolon?
Uh, full colon.
Full colon. Okay, and then one, oh, wait for...
Yeah, but you're not doing for solar farms? And then one through five, I left alone. I, right there at the bottom, I turned that into A instead of I, because we don't have, if you look in the zoning ordinance, everything we have is 1, 2, 3, A, B, C, there's no Is in the zoning ordinance. So, I turned that one into A.
Okay, and followed the rest down.
And the two Is I turned into B, and the three Is I turned into C.
You kept all the verbiage the same?
Yep. And then number six, the following, I got rid of the word additional, the following submission requirements apply to large and medium solar farms.
Before you go there, the paragraph deleted stated outside agency permitting must be completed prior to application submission, and nowhere in 1 through 5 do we address, you got to give us the outside permits.
Okay.
Outside agency...
So we need to like make that one out?
Well, or we could leave it in the... Yeah, yeah, we could stick it in the 1 through...
Yeah.
5, uh, 1 through whatever it is.
I actually like that statement.
I'll put a numbers, I'll put a 6 in there?
No, we have a 6.
Okay. Like turn 6 to 7 and then turn...
Follow it down? Yeah, we could put it as number 7, but it is kind of nice to have it at the top.
Yeah, no, I can, no, I can, I can change the numbers down, that's not gonna...
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say make it 1 and then just bump everything else down.
Funny enough, you've got two 6s in here already. Spare 6.
So 1...
I guess I want to get rid of 1.
Yeah. And what do we want to have that state?
Outside agency permitting must be completed prior to application submission. Right, right from that first paragraph that we've cut back.
Sure. Outside agency permitting must be completed prior to application submission.
Let's change some numbers. 2, 3... 6. We have some more Roman numeral Is again.
On this page. Yeah.
So you want to switch these Is, these Roman numerals to?
A, B, C.
Yeah.
I have, so I have 7, and then I have I, and then beneath that I have sub-paragraphs again.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
You do AA?
No, it's a new paragraph, so the A is okay. Like you can have 1, and then 1A, you've got 2, and 2...
Yeah, yeah, that's, I looked in the zoning ordinance, that's how we do it.
Get it really big. 7 is going to be A. This is going to be B. Are we changing any of these?
Yep, so numbers, what was number 6 is now number 7. And I want to just cut out the word additional, and...
I already did that, I think.
So it'll, numbers, new number 7 will read, the following submission requirements apply to large and medium solar farms. And then I became an A, which I don't even know if we need it, but I'm going to review it with you here. It might just be enough as the statement, I think. Says written documentation from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission regarding any known or likely historic, prehistoric or archaeological resources located in or on the subject property. And then I just got rid of A and B altogether. I feel like we get the written documentation from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, and in that, they give us their take on it, and we do what we will.
Yeah, that...
We don't need A and B, A saying...
So both those sub-paragraphs are gone?
That, that's my inclination, yeah. I just feel like it's, it's kind of, you know, it's, it's more verbiage than we need. We just need, we need the verbiage that says, get the documentation from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, and then they say what they say, and we react to that. And then I, then we move down to what was double high, became B. Written documentation from the Maine Natural Areas Program regarding the presence of rare exemplary natural communities located on the subject property, period. And then I got rid of the two paragraphs underneath that one as well.
So get rid of including any critical?
Yeah, well, that's my suggestion, including any critically imperiled S1 or imperiled S2 natural communities or plant species. Though, those are going to be included by the Maine Natural Areas Program anyhow, that's what they do.
And then you're proposing to remove A and B as well?
Yeah, because there's just, it's kind of like above, it says if such resources are identified, and I don't disagree with what they're saying there.
Just not needed?
I don't think it is needed, I think that...
Okay.
The Maine Natural Areas Program letter that we get will...
Outline it?
Give us what we need. So I got rid of A and B there, then where it's triple high...
C.
I turned that to C, and truncated that one down, so it reads written documentation from the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife regarding known locations of rare endangered threatened species, period. I don't disagree, once again, I don't disagree with what it says, but it gets too specific. It says including Atlantic salmon spawning, would just cover all the species here. And then I got rid of A and B under that one as well.
So it's going to say, you're proposing to end endangered threatened species?
Yep, add the word species after threatened and a period.
Yep. Done.
Or we could say threatened species and habitats.
Yeah, that's probably better, and... And then strike A and B again, you said?
Yeah. It's... It's pretty much the same thinking as what was in the two paragraphs above. And then number, Roman numeral 4 is changed to D and remains the same.
Need the parenthetical site law?
Probably not, I mean... Says for solar farms that trigger review from the Department of Environmental Protection pursuant of the site location development, site law 38 MSRA...
See here.
481, 490 copy of the site law, applications submitted to... I, yeah, I mean, I... I think we need the copy of site law applications submitted to MDEP and any permits granted by MDEP at the time of submission of the application. But we could take the middle out of them, yeah.
Take out like pursuant, that section?
Yeah, the new verbiage would read, for solar farms that trigger review from the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, copy of the...
Yep.
Site law application submitted, and any permits granted. I mean, it's nice to have that extra information in there, but...
You're still leaving any permits granted by the main, MDEP at the time of submission of the application to the town?
Yeah.
I'm reading this right now on the screen, it doesn't make sense to me. For solar farms that trigger review by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, a copy of the site law application submitted to the main DEP?
The applicant shall provide...
Okay.
A copy of the site law application submitted to main DEP and any permits granted, yada, yada.
Did I delete too much, is that what's happening?
No, that wasn't in there, but...
Oh, okay, so, all right, so for solar farms that trigger review by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, a copy the applicant shall provide?
Yep, a copy of the site law application submitted to MDEP and any permits granted by MDEP at the time of submission of the application.
Shall provide a copy?
We don't even need that, any permits granted by MDEP, period.
All right, so Maine Department of Environmental Protection, the applicant shall provide a copy of the, of the site law application submitted to the main DEP?
And any permits granted.
And any permits granted, period.
Yeah. Kind of wish Pat was here, because she, she goes over, she's familiar with it.
I was just waiting to get there.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was flipping back.
I was doing the same thing, that's why I was doing it earlier.
C and D, are you finding A and B for these?
There's no B, we're just dealing with that right?
I was like, what am I missing here?
I'm going to change it as we go.
We were just going through the whole thing.
No, I'm going to change that to a B, and then the next one's going to be C and so forth. Uh, right here, we're right under the paragraph, this, there's no, we don't have a B for some reason, it's just, it goes E to C.
That's E now, C becomes E.
No.
There's only...
A, there's no B, even on the paperwork that you have.
No, B is Roman numeral number 2, written documentation from the Maine Natural Areas Program. A is, Maine Historic Preservation Commission is A.
Just go to paragraph 7.
That's the, so 5 point, so C that needs to be B is actually another sub, a sub-part to 5.29.2, so we have 5.29.2, and then we have an A, and then it goes into more sub-paragraphs. And then when you get to where the, over here, where that C dimensional standards, it's supposed to come back and be under that A for 5.29.2.
So if you look at, if you look at it right now, John, you have A right here, and then you have these sub 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and AB, and then 7, but then it jumps to C, I'm missing this, B, so your next dimensional, dimensional standard needs to be a B. It's, you, you can see it in your paperwork too, it's somehow...
Number 7, yeah, you're, you're right on there, number 7, you've got A, B, C, D, dimensional standards.
It's, it's, it should be a B.
Is the submission requ, go down a little bit?
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Dimensional standards are one of the submission requirements for large and medium solar farms.
So it's just not indented far enough?
Correct, yeah, the, the way the layout, it doesn't match with the zoning ordinance either.
No, I know.
It'd be great if you could help us with...
I did, yeah, I didn't actually change it, this was stuff that was from the prior submission.
Oh, I know, I, absolutely, but if you look at just the way the zoning ordinance is laid out...
Yeah, we'll, we'll change it, but my biggest, so...
It's not...
You're saying it's not its own, you know, you have A here?
I don't think it is its own, I think these, um... I think these dimensional standards...
Are part of the large and...
Yeah, they're, they're only for the large and medium, and they are submission requirements.
So that should be E?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I've got. Yeah.
And should be indented.
Indented in.
Right.
I'm going to, I'm going to play with this tomorrow.
Yeah, and then, then 1 through 5 should be indented a little bit more, just so you can tell it's, that those are underneath sub-dimensional standards.
You're doing the same with the solar farm district standards?
Down. So that becomes F, solar farm district standards?
I'm sure we did that up.
Uh, yeah. Which I didn't, I was a little concerned, the verbiage solar farm district standards was a little bit strange, it doesn't like fit with our other verbiages, I kind of feel like those are additional standards, but, because like, what is the solar farm district?
They don't have one.
You know what I mean, I mean, we kind of do, it's, it's, it's just, if you, if you look at the land use chart for this, um, some, you know, for, on the first page, solar farms medium, and then you go across, there's Ns and Ss. Anything that's an S would be, would be part of this, uh, solar farm district, and anything that's an N wouldn't be, and the same for large solar farms. Which I'm pretty sure the two mimic each other, medium and large. They're, I wish they were on the same page, but...
Yeah, they're, they're the same.
They're the same, N, S, S, N, S, 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 N, 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 N.
Correct.
So anyway, the D...
Give me a second, Gavin.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to get too far into it.
Well, some theory we could.
Gavin, do you want me to try and bring that section up so those are on the same page? Just try and fix stuff up?
Yeah, I think that would be a lot easier for the, the public to look at the thing too.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what we could do, just get rid of one of the...
I'll, I'll just, I'll just move things around in the program, that's fine.
We'll get rid of that second line, and then just say solar farms medium, large, medium comma large.
Yeah, I could do that as well, just add it into, add it into the same table, that'd be fine.
Would that be confusing, since then we have the definitions for large and medium if we combine them? We have to combine those two. Otherwise you'd have two definitions and only one line item in the chart.
Yeah, I think I would, I'd opt to keep them separate because of the definition thing, but it would be very handy if it was on the same page. So the, the standards?
The dimensional standards? E dimensional standards, I didn't change anything other than E.
Right, and then the...
Solar farm district standards, I turned it from D, I turned it into an F.
And you still have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5?
Yeah, and then number 1, I kind of truncated that one down. I mean, I kind of, I, in terms of the heading, solar farm district standards, I toyed with changing that to just additional standards, but whatever. Then number 1, I've changed that to say signage shall be installed on the property to identify the owner and provide a 24-hour emergency contact phone number, period. I removed additional signage... I removed additional signage may be required. All signs must conform to the change of the Acton zoning ordinance. It's, those are, that's unneeded information. Of course, they're gonna have to conform, and. Yes, we may ask, we.
Right.
May ask for additional signage, that's. And then number, number two, I like number two. Number three, I cut out part of number three.
Oh, I'm missing number two.
Number two, all electrical and.
Yeah, no, I, I merged two and, one and two together by accident. You're all set.
So number three.
Yeah.
I just, I cut out that have frontage on a private or public road, so it reads now, solar farms must maintain a 50-foot water buffer at the property's front side and rear lot lines. Because. What, what lot isn't gonna have frontage, and if they, they end up not having frontage, even though we say they have minimum road frontage is 50 feet, so it's gotta have frontage. But even if they didn't, I'm fine with the 50-foot buffer.
Yeah, me too.
So I just got rid of the, that have frontage on a private or public road. Didn't seem necessary. And then, uh. Number four, oh, and I, yeah, and I took part of number four. And moved it up into number three. The line, the planning board may require additional plantings to create a naturalized vegetated buffer. I stuck that at the end of number three. Which I don't know if number four, uh, we could just strike number four entirely, would be fine with me. Because we, we always have the purview to require additional plantings.
Okay, so five turns to four.
And I got rid of.
I don't know, in this case, well, I guess we'll get to that. It might be good to overtly say that, given the whole. People don't wanna see it thing.
But which part would you like to leave in?
Existing trees?
No, the planning board may require.
Yeah, I, let's just move that up into number three.
That's what, yeah, you're saying, just get rid of four, but move the planning board section up to three.
Okay.
Yeah, cause, you know, that whole can't see it from voices was an issue.
And then, uh, what they had is number five, access drives. I just got rid of that altogether. Cause it wouldn't be a bar, a buffer if they had parking areas in it. And then number six, the solar farm maintenance and operations plan shall be provided upon site plan approval. I think we can get rid of that entirely. Number six. Um, number seven becomes number four.
Mm-hmm.
And I left it alone.
Okay.
Uh, number eight becomes number five. And I left it alone. Though. That is one that we do need to tweak somehow.
That was the one that they had an issue with the surety, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, there was a couple issues. One was just that we were asking for the surety, but I, I really think that it's, that we should ask for the surety personally. Um, and the other issue was the, um, five, every, reviewed by the planning board or designated every five years. And renewed or adjusted as necessary. People didn't like that either. Um.
That's what we're doing with the mineral attractions, isn't it?
And I, I mean, I think it's reasonable, these things have a life of 20 to 40 years. Um. You know, and. In, in 30 years, you know, things change, and maybe we would have to adjust the surety. Maybe, you know, maybe the amount they gave us wasn't gonna be enough, or. Maybe it was gonna be more than enough, because now they can sell the solar panels and recycle them. I mean, I.
Do you wanna change the five years to something larger, or, or just?
I wasn't gonna change any of that right now. I, just because I knew it was a, a board discussion, not just a.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Okay.
I, I'd be fine with leaving it in there and running it by legal like that.
Looked at them last time. That's legal where it's the problem.
Yeah.
That's now.
Right, whatever one upper.
What did they wanna change it to?
Well, they, the selectmen wanna just get rid of the surety altogether. They feel like we shouldn't be a third party, that the, the whole transaction is between the landowner and the leaseholder. But I feel like the, the, say the, the company, the leaseholder ditched the project, didn't clean it up. The landowner probably isn't gonna have enough money to clean it up. And that's why the town is there, um, with our decommissioning escrow. Um, to help with that issue, because nobody wants to see these things just languishing there. Um, and then we were discussing whether or not we should review the surety during the life of the project or not, and. We came up with the five years. Um. But that wasn't popular.
Would making it a longer timeframe make it better?
I'm not sure, cause that, that might just. I mean, if it was every, I mean, we could do every 10 years, but I think they would say the same thing. Personally, but.
That's your point, though. The technology is evolving so rapidly that if we assign a dollar figure now. You know, even easily 10 years from now, it could be.
Outdated.
Way off the scale in one way or another.
That's why we did it.
Yeah.
I don't know if we, the. You, you mentioned the issue. They don't wanna be the third party. The only way I saw around that is if in this, we overtly made it apparent that the, um. Leaseholder or the operator and the property owner. Are liable, have, and/or the property owner have to, um, reclaim or remove. I mean, we could just write that in, and then we wouldn't need the lawyer to look at, look at that.
Right, right.
But we're overtly saying, and then we can take it out, and we're, we're overtly saying. Maybe a small-time guy would be a little reticent to sign up for that, but we're overtly saying, your leaseholder or you are gonna pay to remove it.
What's the mechanism to enforce that, though?
I think we put it in the law. And then he would have to, the owner and the leaseholder, I'm sure would have to develop their own contract.
Hmm, I still feel like the town could get stuck with the issue, though, because if the, the company pulls out, leaves it to the landowner, the landowner. You know, like we, the town inherits properties through back taxes, and.
Yeah.
We could end up inheriting the thing regardless.
Yeah, we could.
And then, then what would we do? But the, the selectmen put in that clause where they don't have to take the property. To try and get out of that kind of thing. I remember they just did that last year, and, you know, to try to address this kind of thing, so that, say, the, the property owner. You know, didn't, didn't pay their taxes, and, you know, the land, the land, you know, the, the people who owned it aged out, and the, the people who are gonna inherit it didn't want it or whatever, because they didn't wanna deal with it. The town wouldn't have to take it. It would just sit there. But we'd still have the. Potential brownfield site sitting in the town.
Right.
Cause I, that, that is, that is one of the biggest issues with this whole thing, is trying to muddle that out, the decommissioning.
Yeah, I, given where we are, I mean, I, I would like to explore writing something in that says it's on you, property owner, and the operator. And understanding what you're saying, but they know that going in, they could, they could protect themselves in a contract with the operator. However, we're not gonna come up with that language tonight.
No.
So then, I think, leaving it alone, or at least going to 10 years. Which is probably too long, given the technology, but at least.
Well, it gives you a time to review it again and change it, if, you know, if you get it in there now, then you can review it at another date, change it.
Yeah.
You know, next year or the year after.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think we'll get that language written.
Want me to just put it in at 10 years right now?
I think so.
Or leave it at five?
I would say 10.
Yeah, we can change it to 10 for now, and this will be something that we are gonna have to. Discuss with the, hopefully with the other members of the board too, to noodle it out.
Part of that issue with the five years, I think, was they thought it was too often. I mean, they didn't like it. This is a point, but I think they also thought it was too often.
No, I, I'm, I'm, I don't see an issue with it being at 10. These are fairly new. They're not going anywhere anytime tomorrow, you know?
Yeah. Alright, let's do that. Okay, then number nine turned into number six. And I re, I changed it around a little bit. Large and, to, to now read, large and medium solar farms shall be located outside of any portions. Of a property within the shoreline, little osipie, or resource protection districts. And I got rid of. The must-meet-current standards, and additional plantings may be required to meet these standards. Cause I don't see how additional planting is gonna help if, if the thing's in the wrong zone. So once again. I'll read it again.
Give me a second.
Okay.
So I have, large and medium solar farms shall be located outside of any portion of a property within the shoreline, little osipie, and resource protection districts, and must meet current standards.
I would just put a period after districts.
Okay.
I mean, for me, the, the point of this clause is just to keep them out of the.
Did you, uh, did you remove the last two, that, and must meet current standards, additional planning may be required to meet these standards?
Yes.
You removed that, all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, don't go into the shoreline, osipie, or resource.
Okay.
Yeah. Which the, the, I think the state says they can't go into the shoreline. They, they can't have the large and medium in the shoreline anyway, but the state doesn't have. The little osipie or resource protection districts like the town of Acton does, so add those in there. Okay, number 10 is stricken. Anyway. The, uh. The one about the Great Pond. Uh, number 11 becomes number seven. Number 12 is gone. And number 13 becomes number eight. And. Number 14, I just got rid of it.
Cause we've already said that before.
Well, I mean, the, the only difference between 14 and the other buffers we have is that this one says it's a visual buffer as opposed to a vegetated buffer.
Right.
The problem with the vis, the visual buffer is that the leaves fall off in the wintertime. Um, so a vegetated buffer may not cut it, but are we really gonna ask these people to put up a.
A fence around.
A 30-foot solid fence, or whatever it's gonna, you know? I feel like it's gonna be impossible to create a visual buffer. Um. You know, if you think about the one on each road, what they would have to do to make a visual buffer for that, I don't know what they would do. Seems.
It would be cost prohibitive, whatever it was.
And it wouldn't look that good either.
Right.
And you'd be looking at this giant wall or some, something. So. I'm, I'm thinking we, you know, cut at least, at least a page out of this thing by doing that. Make it a little easier to. For people to review it. And then it just fits better in the ordinance too. Cause it's, you know, once we get this thing in the ordinance, it's hard to go back and get rid of redundant language. It's, we have to go through this whole process all over again.
So at the very beginning, Gavin, can we go back over?
So we'll go through what we.
Yeah, cause I, I did a bunch of changes after the, um, um, this, after the five point two, nine point one. Um. So just, let's, let's do a quick review of it, if you don't mind.
Right, so, yep. So for the definitions, we'll add in.
Yeah, the top and.
The one above it and the one below it in the definitions, so that it's clear that that's the, that's where it's going in the ordinance. And then, um, five point two, nine, solar energy generation systems, we'll make that plural. Okay. And then that next paragraph, the purpose, I cut that out entirely. I mean, it's okay to have it in there. But I, I feel like it's kind of, I mean. That's, that's why we have the zoning ordinance, is to make sure that these things are safe, effective. And compatible with the surrounding uses, I mean, if. So I got rid of that entirely. Um. So then. General standards. I got rid of that. I didn't have that at all.
A, A and B is.
No, no, just five point two, nine point one, general standards. And, yeah, so that, okay, and then. What was, what was A? Um. I changed it to say, solar energy generation systems. Must obtain all the applicable permits.
Solar energy generation systems.
Instead of listing out. Accessory, medium, and large.
Solar energy generation systems.
Delete mediums and large. Right there, yeah.
Must obtain all applicable permits from the Acton Code Enforcement Office and State of Maine.
Yeah, I mean, that would, you could just put a period right there.
I would take generation out too, so we, we comply with the definitions.
Okay.
We, we have solar energy systems, and then small, medium, or large area.
Okay.
If you have generation, people say, what's that definition?
Yeah, I don't, yeah. Do you wanna take it out of the?
The header too?
The heading?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. And then put a colon after systems? Maybe? No, I don't think we need it. Okay.
Don't need it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, cause it's on area.
Where it says including but not limited to building and electrical permits? I don't think we need that. We can just say all permits. From the Acton Code Enforcement Officer in the State of Maine. Period. Yeah. And then, um. B, I got rid of B altogether, cause it's, um. So five point two, nine point one.
Take out Board to Officer.
Right, would now read, solar energy systems generating power for onsite consumption shall be considered accessory to the principal use. Yeah. And I don't think we. I don't think we need an A under, um, yeah, that one. I don't think we need an A there, cause there's no B. And just say solar energy systems. And then the, the next A down. Solar energy systems accessory shall be permitted wherever accessory uses are permitted, and shall conform to the standards of the applicable district. Districts, yeah. We got that one.
Yeah, this is where I started following, getting, making the changes while we're going. That was just the beginning. I didn't quite get them. I started, I was doing it on paper, and then I was like, ah, let me just.
Yeah.
And then if we wanna go back, I can always just go back to the original.
Solar energy systems generating power for off-site consumption shall not be considered an accessory use, are subject to site plan review, and shall conform to the standards of solar farm medium or solar farm large as listed below. Application requirements. Yep, outside agency permitting must be completed prior to application submission. Yep. Yep. Six.
Sorry, I'm just playing around, getting rid of some stuff.
Okay, so B, we'll just put a space in there between federal and waste.
Oh, yep, I see.
C, and then... Yep. Following submissions requirements applied to application for large and medium, subwritten documentation from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission regarding any known or likely historic, prehistoric, or archaeological resources located in or on the subject property. B, written documentation from the Maine Natural Areas Program regarding the presence of rare or exemplary natural communities located on the subject property. C, written documentation from the Maine Department of Energy and Fisheries and Wildlife regarding known locations of rare endangered threatened species and habitats. Maybe we should put an O in there, regarding locations of rare endangered or threatened species and habitats?
That sounds better.
Oop, I have it there. Give me a second.
Pretty much stayed the same. F, solar farm district standards.
Do we wanna change district? We push it on.
Yeah, get rid of district, wasn't that what it was? Solar farm standards?
Yeah, I guess so. I was a little confused, what was going on there?
Large and medium solar farm standards.
Well, we already had, but dimensionals just for them, too, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're already in the...
Just be standards and combine the two?
Yeah, we could kinda combine them, it's just that the, yeah, yeah, maybe we should, yeah, get, go down to what's the dimensional standards and just says stan, and put it, so, get rid of dimensional. So, it just says standards.
Yeah.
And then one becomes six?
Put a colon there, standards. And then, yeah, and the one...
Get rid of solar farm.
Get rid of solar farm standards, I'll, that line, I'll, yeah, strike that.
And that's become six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Mm-hmm. And we'll, you know, get those in the same line as the other, so it looks...
I will.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Um, so, let's read what it says, or this, this. And shall be required. Hang on a second.
Hang on. Go back up just a little bit, so we can read the changes.
So, number three became number eight.
Yeah.
Yep, solar farms must maintain.
For people with a buffer, the property soon, planning board may require additional planning to create a naturalized buffer. Yeah.
And would be buying away any...
Yeah, and then the access drives that one away. Right, now we're on to applicant or owner. Yep. Sure, the O. Large and medium solar farms shall be located outside of any portion of a property within the shoreland.
Wasn't number nine a concern with them, too? With the whole, who's, how's, how are we gonna know that they're not generating power?
Oh, yeah, well, this was something that, remember, Bernard put this in with the six Applicant or owner of a large or medium solar farm is required to submit records to the Acton Code Enforcement Officer every six months to demonstrate that the solar farm is producing energy. Decommissioning and removal of the solar farm is required after six consecutive months of no energy generation. The owner and operator, owner or operator and or operator, shall remove the system in its entirety no later than 90 days after the end of the six-month period of no energy generation. And this was just, we wanted to have something that said that they gotta clean it up within a certain amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, the six months of no energy generation seems to make sense, I, whether or not they'd be able to clean it up in 90 days, I don't know.
Tough deadline.
Seems like it's kind of ninety...
One year?
That seems unfair.
I mean, you gotta think about, these sites aren't small.
Right, and then 90 days, it could be January, February, March, they can't do it.
Right. Within 12 months?
Sure. I thi, I think the six months of no power generation is fine, but then, we'll change 90 days?
Yeah, need to clean up the owner or operator and or operator. Something's gotta go there.
Yeah.
Owner or operator shall remove.
Well, really, if you're seeing, like, the owner, then you're talking about the property owner. So, it's really, we really want the operator being the leaseholder to, to clean it up.
Well, we've said owner or operator, other, you know, the...
Yeah, okay. I kinda, I don't care who comes up. I put it on one or the other. You know, if the, the operator vanishes, then the landowner, you know, and that's where that surety or whatever.
That, that's when we get into the next one. So, then, um...
Yep.
Yeah, the surety, yeah. And we'll, we'll revisit that one probably at some point. And then, um, the next one was, large and medium solar farms shall be located outside many portions of a property within the shoreland. Little osipie and resource protection districts. Some slope. And meet the standard chapter 500, stone mortar enhancement. Which I think it's important to keep that one in there.
Yeah, because it's...
They don't consider it...
Yeah, I think the wrong number.
Yeah, so it gets, you know, okay.
They drive this.
And they, they re-level the whole place.
Six.
All right.
That's good work, yeah.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Yeah, well, I wish, you know...
Because we want something...
I wish I'd taken that, those two arrows last year, but...
Yeah, well. All right, so I saved that one, and let's go on to your, our mineral, mineral extraction. And the question I think we had was, did you want to leave this in one document or break it up into?
Right, cause we have to figure that out pretty quick, don't we? Well, what do we think the most egregious part of this thing is? Cause that would be, you know, that would be the part that we would wanna, maybe, as a separate article, would be the, the part that we thought people would object to most. But I'm not, I haven't figured that out. Did you come up with any changes, John, for this?
No.
Okay.
I wanted to re, I wanted to see it. You know, we kinda did this on the screen, so I wanted to see it.
We emailed them all to you guys, too, though, right?
Yeah, I got...
Minus Gavin.
Um, okay, so, um, I had a couple, I did have a couple things.
And we still, so we still have to send him to the, we still have to hold a public hearing, and I think we can still change him after the public hearing, if there's something that we find from the public that we should, needs to be changed, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's the whole point of the public hearing.
Well, it's, it gets weird, though, because we're so close to the town meeting, it's like, sometimes we hold a public hearing like now.
Right.
And get that input and address it before we get so close to the deadline.
And we can schedule a public, maybe possibly schedule a public hearing, and then...
Yeah, maybe in, in April.
Yeah, we need, um, yeah, I can meet, I can do it in mid-April, so, the, Thursday in April, and we can do that, and that, that gives us, because do we have to hold another public hearing after we make the changes, or no?
Um, we should, ju, just for transparency. But if we, you know, yeah, I don't know, I, I don't think it would be bad to hold two public hearings.
If we have time.
That's, yeah, that's where I'm trying to do the timeframe in my head, because...
Cause it will eat up a whole meeting. Probably, people will be, you know, hemming and hawing.
Who shows up?
Well, when we have mineral extraction on the docket, people are gonna show up.
Mm-hmm. You would hope so, because I, you know? They showed up when there was a moratorium at...
Yeah.
On the table?
Okay, um, just walk through this one a little bit? So, number, where am I here on this?
Number, uh, letter C is our first edition.
Yep.
And that was just a copies prepared by a professional land surveyor or, comma, registered engineer or certified geologist. Then we run down to line two. The applicant shall submit evidence of right title or interest in, in the property to include the name and address of the owners, owner, owners of the property involved in the York County Registry of Deeds book and page number for the property.
And then we kind of add in our, this is where we rolled in the buildings permanent and temporary?
Yes, I gotta shade those in.
But that's not the same as the other change we were noodling with, with the buildings permanent and temporary. And is that in here? Sure, I don't know if I saw it in there, actually.
It should be.
Should be.
Page 54. Yeah, number seven on page 54, D7.
What, we added temporary?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's in here, okay. Yeah, it's on the next page.
Send it up to it, yeah.
Yeah, number, okay, that's where I write that, okay.
Back up. So, then, we, so we added that, buildings permanent and temporary, um, to that paragraph. Number three, the proposed maximum extent of excavation, period, excavations five acres or larger in size must include Maine Department of Land Protection gravel pit identification number.
Yeah, I, I hate to do this, but I, since you've been going on, I've been trying to read that first change, and it just doesn't make sense.
First change.
Yeah, right there.
This, right here?
The sentence doesn't make sense.
Uh, eight copies?
Well, you gotta read the whole thing. Applications to the planning board for the excavation screening, blah, 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 or other mineral deposits shall be accompanied by a plan prepared according to planning board specification, comma, eight copies prepared, the copies of what? Prepared by a professional land surveyor, registered engineer, or certified geologist, comma, performance standards here and, so they're gonna submit...
Well, we just need to move the, the verbiage we have in red up, so it says, shall be accompanied by eight copies of a plan prepared by a professional land surveyor, registered Performance standards they are in, in compliance with the...
Would just be after geologist in compliance with?
What are we getting eight copies of? What are we getting eight copies of?
Well, whatever the, submit to the, whatever the documentation.
Shall be accompanied by eight copies of a plan.
Yeah.
Prepared by.
Yeah, okay.
So just move it up.
According to planning board specification.
Yeah, move it up.
Where are we seeing this move it up part?
Where, so shall
Accompanied.
By eight copies of a plan.
Alright, so let's take.
Cut that and paste it after by. And then delete a plan prepared. Okay, so what, shall be accompanied by eight copies of a plan prepared by a professional land surveyor.
And with specification. Performance standards here and in compliance, yeah, okay, now, now, now I can get it. So I am slow.
No, no, that's good, yeah, I can see that. Okay, number four needs a space after the four.
The proposed maximum extent of excavation, excavations five acres or larger in size must include the main department of environmental protection gravel pit identification number. Number four, existing and proposed surface water runoff including all drainage ways. At least one monitoring well will be required per five acre parcel within the extraction areas. Operation plans will include, one, access roads maintenance, access roads maintenance as required. Is there something missing there?
Operations plans will include access roads.
Maintenance.
Maybe no S.
As required for access roads. It's worded funny.
Yeah.
Access roads and their maintenance, something like, like, you just need an extra couple of words in there. Because we want to know where the access roads are and how they're going to be maintained.
Yeah, so how about access roads, construction, and maintenance?
Description of construction, processing, and removal methodology. Erosion and sedimentation control as required. Reclamation plan as required. Number seven, a letter from the active fire department stating that they will be able to provide emergency services to the property.
We need the as required.
That's what I was thinking, get rid of both of those as requireds, or all of them.
Three of them, yeah.
Yeah, there's three, yeah.
Mm-hmm. You fine with the fire department?
Yeah, I was wondering if we should take out the word parcel in the, in number five, at least one monitoring well will be required per five acres within the extraction areas. Just because parcel is kind of confusing.
Yeah, parcel's a definitive.
Yeah, which, yeah. Okay. Response from the following state agencies regarding the proposed excavation.
Main Historic Preservation Commission, Main Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, Main Department of Conservation Natural Areas Program, and as well as, well, entrance permit from the Main Department of Transportation if required.
We go back up to the operational plans, when we say description of construction, processing, and removal methodology. What does construction mean there? Is that, um.
Maybe we should say operations.
Yeah. Operation, operations, processing, and removal. Yeah, I think that's better. So they might think of a building.
Right, which may be included, but may not.
Right.
Number eight, there's a period at the end of number one. And not on others.
God, did I?
What is this, um, number five, you might want a period to do that, probably all the time, number five does.
Want to go back to, on to the next one, John, or?
Yeah, I'm okay with you changed construction to operation.
Yeah.
Now we're down to number five in the next paragraph.
Yeah, so the hours of operation of any extraction site shall be limited as the planning board deems advised advisable to ensure operations compatibility with residents of the town. There should be no crushing or screening on Saturdays and Sundays from Memorial Day to Labor Day and Fourth of July.
We need to say Sundays, because we don't allow Sundays anyway. Do we?
Don't think so. I think if we omit it and just leave Saturdays, that kind of makes it a little bit vague in the reverse way, though, you know what I mean? Like, if we just say no crushing or screening on Saturdays, then somebody could interpret that as.
Oh, yeah. We could start on Sunday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
So it might be redundant, but I think it's necessarily redundant.
Okay.
Sometimes you guys just spell it out for people, John.
Believe me, I know. One of the ones. You see where we are?
Yeah, yeah.
So six.
All access egress roads leading to and from the extraction site to the prop, to the public ways shall be treated with suitable materials to reduce dust and mud for a distance of at least 100 feet from such public ways. The applicant shall employ the main department of environmental protection best management practices for the control of fugitive emissions, dust, as approved by the planning board. A plan shall be play, shall be in place to adequately remove any tracked mud or debris on any public or private roads upon exiting their property.
I would just take upon out, so it just says any or private roads exiting their property.
Fancy way of saying dust.
Mm.
Uh, next one was the temporary buildings one, we go in.
And we could just say any temporary buildings or shelters. Well, that's kind of what we had before, isn't it? It's just kind of redundancy, temporary twice, but it definitely spells it out.
Yeah.
That was kind of the issue.
That was the issue.
Okay. For you alls, before it was, it just said temporary shelters or buildings, so so we could be referring to a permanent building.
You got it.
If you want to stretch the verbiage. Okay, and then number nine?
Say shall be retained within 100 feet of the property. 100 foot, you don't like foot?
Take the out.
And then, I would lean toward just putting a period after street line and striking as, except as recommended by a professional forester pursuant to best force be approved by the planning board to the extent necessary to protect neighboring uses from dust noise and unsightly appearance. Strike that middle part and then have the planning board may require the applicant to provide screening, a burner, a combination where the inadequate natural where, where there is inadequate, in. Where the natural buffer is inadequate. And my thinking was just that if we, if we allow the forest to decide, um, we're just opening up another can of worms where he gets paid by how many trees they take out, so he might recommend that they harvest that area.
Yeah.
Which is which flies in contrast to what we have in the, in the zoning ordinance already, so. Uh, number number 10. I had the last line, ensure that sediment does not leave the property or enter internal natural resources.
Plural it. I think we also need the word in between submit and erosion, submit and erosion and sedimentation control plan. The applicant shall submit an erosion. An erosion and sedimentation control plan using best management practices for erosion and sedimentation control as approved by the planning board to ensure that sediment does not leave the property or enter a protected natural resource, resource, and I'll put.
I don't know.
Put the code.
I was changing it to or enter internal natural resources. Because who's to define what a protected natural resource is?
So to strike a protected.
And put internal. Or you could just say enter natural resources.
And I just pluralized, I put the resource and then, and then pluralized, put the S on the, on there too, just in case there's more than one.
Right. Yeah, the, yeah. Okay.
At least one monitoring well on each five acres of unreclaimed land sufficient in depth to demonstrate the depth from excavation to the seasonal high water table. Monitoring wells shall be checked annually by a professional licensed surveyor, registered engineer, or certified geologist between April 1st, May 31st, and a report shall be submitted to the code enforcement office stating the amount of separation between the excavation and water table.
And I suggest that we change it to change amount to distance. Stating the distance of separation. I don't, I don't know.
How would you do it?
Hmm? Just strike amount. Amount of separation, just.
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, 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 okay, I'm with you.
Yeah, it's a small thing, but.
I was looking somewhere else.
Well, we don't even need of separation then, do we?
Right, no, we don't.
The distance between the excavation and water table.
Yeah, yep.
First sentence in this one, it's hard to follow.
It's a little weird, yeah.
That's what I, I was reading, I was like, ah.
Something's going on after land where sufficient.
Yeah, sufficient in depth. Demonstrate the depth.
Right, so five acres of unreclaimed land to demonstrate the depth of excavation to the seasonal high water table. Sufficient in depth is a little redundant there, is that the issue?
Demonstrate the depth. That's better.
You took out land.
Yeah, I was gonna say I'm missing something still. Let's add it to the dictionary. Make up words, yeah. A stormwater management plan shall be submitted to and approved by the Department of Environmental Protection for all areas of the site that are not internally drained.
We want to say something that something like all utilized areas of the site that are not internally drained, so that so that no one thinks we're asking them to have a stormwater management plan for their buffer or something like that.
Yeah, that's probably a good catch.
For all operational areas?
Yeah, something like that.
For all operational areas?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, one word change, like it.
Something's going on.
Thirteen.
Yeah.
Open acreage. Well, I don't think we need the first open acreage.
Yeah.
That statement that says open acreage.
Yeah. Yeah, just start 13 with biannually within one month of blah, blah, blah.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, yeah, I don't even know if it was supposed to be in there, might have been. I was plugging away at this while they were reading it, the last meeting. Biannually, within one month of the anniversary date of the approval, approval of conditional use, the owner-operator must send the code enforcement officer a letter detailing the amount of open acreage is in compliance.
Detailing that. That the amount of open acreage is in compliance.
Or even just confirming the amount of open acreage is in compliance.
Or we don't even need the is in compliance, we're just detailing the amount of open acreage.
Right, yeah.
You know, because they don't have to send us something that's, that says that it's in compliance, we just need to know how much it is.
Yeah.
Because it may not be in compliance.
Alright, open acreage detailing the amount. Detailing the amount open, because I have a quote, what was it, a letter detailing the amount of open acreage. Oh, I don't give any, I, I added stuff. Okay. Alright, let's read this. Biannually, within one month of the anniversary date of the approval of. approval of conditional use, the owner operator must send the code enforcement office a letter detailing the amount of open acreage. The letter will be based on a, based on a licensed surveyor or Google Earth.
If we get rid of or?
I am right now.
Yeah, just put a comma there instead of.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Will be based on a licensed surveyor, Google Earth, GPS programming, or equivalent technology. Let's see what they go with.
You'll check this, I think, right, but it looks to me like some of the underlines are missing.
Where is that, in this?
Like in 12, the second line, and then the second line in 13.
No, those are all underlined.
How about the second, second line in 13?
Oh yeah, there's like some words in the middle there that are not underlined.
All right, well, this is what we're gonna do. Everything gets an underline.
There you go.
Yeah.
I'm concerned, I'm still concerned with what, what the letter will be based on, like, imagery from Google Earth and those kind of free resources can be notoriously outdated, like.
Oh, we already know this, we've gone over this one a bunch of times, but.
It just that.
Google Earth is two years behind.
So that's what I mean, what good does that do us? You know?
That's what the DNP, that's what the DEP uses, unfortunately. So we're kind of sticking it in there because that's what they use. And I've had that conversation with them, was how do you guys, if you don't make it there, how do you check it? And they said usually Google Earth. It was down in our, down in southern Maine, central Maine, it's not that bad, but it's, you know, but once you get into the county, you're five years behind.
Oh, yeah.
It was like, I think they're at 2016.
Yeah, even satellites don't want to go up that far.
So yeah, it's just, I don't know.
Well, you know, it's a start, currently we don't.
Yeah.
We don't get any.
I know, I just, I wish there was a way to, I mean, like, you know, drone technology now being what it is, like, I know we can't really step outside of the bounds of what is already, it's just, I don't know, it just feels almost useless if we're gonna go by data that's years old.
Right. Well, we didn't want to just hold them to the licensed surveyor, cause it was gonna be, we felt it would be like a hindrance, that people would definitely object to it.
Yeah.
So we wanted options, but.
I just feel like there has to be a better option, there has to be somewhere between a survey.
GPS programming, like, like we were talking about, somebody can use their phone to, that would be more, probably, it would be.
What if we took out Google Earth?
Yeah. We could.
Just say licensed surveyor, GPS programming, or equivalent technology.
Yeah, and there, like you said, there are apps that you can use to walk out perimeters and submit that data.
All right. Inspect out the equivalent technology so they can, that still gives them leeway. I definitely, I feel like that might be something they object to. But I don't know if I want to separate it out, just point it out and then they just focus.
You know, but we, there's a lot of leeway there.
Right, right.
Something's gotta be done with this. First, number three, inspections. Permits granted under this section shall expire after two years unless the applicant meets the following conditions. Do you want to leave it inspections, period, spaces, or is, I'm just trying to?
Uh, well, to be consistent, maybe you could take that out.
I don't know what the inspections is for, that's kind of what I'm.
Stop with permits.
Yeah.
Then it does mention inspections in one and two. Should it be inspections or permits?
It was just a weird, I was trying to figure out what three was doing, would, I don't think inspections need to be there before the permit's granted.
Yeah, but I was saying like in one and two below it, it mentions inspections. So should there be inspections in that sentence three?
Yeah.
Saying inspections instead of permits.
Yeah, I'm okay with leaving it, I, there are other places where we do that. This is one I think they'll object to, Gavin.
Right, right.
What's that, number one?
Yeah. A bit about pay the town a fee. Maybe we put a period after November 1.
Yeah.
Are we striking the rest of it, or are we just?
That would be the idea, yeah, cause we don't really need to include that in here.
Yeah.
That.
What is happening here? Within 30 days of the inspection, the town, actually, the town code enforcement officer shall notify the owner operator within writing of the inspection results.
What is the, including all fees, what fees would be associated with fixing a violation?
All right, which one are we on?
Number.
Um, so.
After stop.
If you put a stop work order, I believe it's $275 to remove the stop work order, and then like up to $250 per day after each.
That's currently in our.
It's in our ordinance, yeah, on a stop work order.
Okay, all right.
Well, it's on our, if you look at the, um, the fee schedule that the select board has approved.
Okay.
Stop work order, it's either 275 or 250 for the original removal, and then if you don't comply, it's like 250 per day or $200 per day. Um, before, the one that you had, we had talked about putting, I just didn't put it in there, was you would terminate their, their permit, and I just thought that might be a little too harsh, and, um.
Yeah.
It was like, you know, you, your first violation was, you'd be subject to termination. And I figured that was like, that wording was, was gonna put us in a tough situation when people started reading that. So this one at least gives the, the land use the opportunity to say, hey, you're in violation, stop what you're doing, fix it, and then let's get you back up and running again.
And if they don't fix it within a year, then they're started square one.
Yeah, a year is a long time, and then if they don't fix it within that year, then they're gonna come back in front of the planning board, and.
Full new.
The board has the ability to say, well, you can't get this part of your conditions right, so you're not gonna be allowed to do that. So if somebody has the stump grindings adjacent to their, or added to their extraction, and they can't, they're not doing it, or they're grinding it outside of their times, and, you know, I'm just using that for an excuse, and you can just say, hey, you can't follow the rules, so you can't do it. That's kind of how I was, how I was writing it, and I didn't know if, I just wanted to make sure you guys approved of it.
You know, I think we might, let's see. Well, we can go, I get administrivia, but let's look at the last one then.
Yeah, number three. I'd like to change the last line a little bit. Comply within one year, they will be subject to the review of their conditional use permit by the planning board. Instead of conditional uses under this section, I mean, similar, but.
All right, nothing in this section shall be construed to limit inspections by the town code enforcement officer as necessary to ensure compliance.
Make it conditional use permit up above, you left the S's there.
Conditional use, uses.
Yeah, above, yeah, there you go.
Anybody have an issue with four?
I feel like we hammered that one pretty well at the last meeting.
I like it, I need to be able to get a handle on it. Hey, here's my administrivia though.
Such existing approved operations will schedule. I think we may need to add one word in number four. In the last sentence, such existing approved operations will schedule within one year the effective date of this ordinance, and every three years, maybe just schedule review or schedule. I mean, does anybody think?
Say?
Right, maybe we should be specific what they're gonna schedule.
Schedule an inspection?
Inspection, yeah.
Yeah, we're saying the inspection in number three is what we're saying, oh no, not in three.
Oh yeah, no, we do, yeah, we described it already. So, we will schedule within one year the effective date of this ordinance, and every three years thereafter, the inspection outlined above in the code office.
So I can remove an inspection?
Yeah. Yeah, no change.
No change, okay.
So do we need, under E, at last, uh, page four, we have number three inspections, does the sub things need to be A, B, C, and D?
Make them A.
To be consistent.
Oh, so you're saying maybe inspections should be F? Or should it stay under permit approval?
Well, it can, it was staying, I mean, it's okay by me if it stays under permit approval, but then it shouldn't be C31, shouldn't it, to be consistent? Should it be C3A, and this is just stupid administrivia, but I'm trying to see what we've done before.
Were you talking about right here, John, changing these from 1, 2, 3 to A, B, C, D? Or no?
Yes.
Okay.
So under E permit approval then, 1, 2, 3.
I mean, is that consistent with what we've done? I, I'm looking like, yeah. So, you're in a paragraph, you go A, B, C, and then under that, 1, 2, 3, and then under that, it's A, B.
Yeah.
Or B, D?
Yep.
Yeah, cause that's what we did under number eight, so, yeah, for consistency.
I don't know how we can break it up, but I think we've softened some of the objections.
Can you go to the very bottom again for just a second? Existing operation. D? Hang on, no, go, go, yeah, right there. I think that would still be a number.
Yeah, I think you changed something different to.
Maybe it should still be four?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, I think you just wanted to change.
Oh, okay, so these need to be 1, 2, 3, 4 still?
Yes.
Leave those A, B, C, D.
Yes, and then that's four.
All right, okay. Right. So that's all of our proposed changes.
Yeah, so I'm gonna play with these a little bit tomorrow, just to clean them up, um, not with the verbiage, but just the formats before I send them. Then I'll send these by, you know, email to, over to, um, town attorney.
Yeah.
And, I now tend to have in the scheduled book, like I said, um, for the ninth, um, a workshop planning board meeting, um, just to get these things.
So next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Gotta wait that down, set them off.
Um, I'll reach out to Chris and Pat and Adam, let them know about it too, because it will be a voting. I think it's gonna have to have a vote at the workshop to approve, vote to approve the warrant articles.
And we gotta make sure the camera, we got the camera people lined up.
I've already told Jen about this, like.
Okay.
I told her about it after the last meeting, because so much time has to be notified.
Are we doing it at what time?
I think I put it at six o'clock. I'll have to double check. If it was six or seven, I'll, I'll even, I'll reach out to you guys tomorrow. But for some reason, I think I put it on the calendar at six, but six or seven, doesn't really matter, it's what works best for.
Well, I, the reason I ask is sometimes we do it at five when we're doing workshops, which seems to work for some people.
What mattered to me?
Well, I'm okay with six, except that's better for everybody else.
I think it'll be quick.
Can Chris, Chris make it for that date?
Yeah, he just had, um.
No, I'm not worried about tonight, I'm just saying, I don't know if I can make that, I don't know if I can be here next.
I'll make sure he's here.
So if Chris is here, that just makes it simpler for everyone, yeah. Cause I don't think we even know who, who would run the meeting if neither of us were here, right?
Well, no, we don't have that secretary positioning.
Right.
But, well, I'll make sure Chris is here.
Do we need, um, to do anything official to get you to send it to the void?
Uh, you guys can vote on, I don't know if you actually have to, but you're more than welcome to make a motion to move it along to town council. I don't know if you have to, but, can't remember.
Yeah, we might as well, I guess.
Okay. Remove, we asked the town attorney for a review of, um, four proposed zoning ordinance changes. One, do I need to spell them out of the four, I guess I'll spell them out, the mineral, one on mineral exploration. And extraction. One on, uh, conditional use. One on review procedure in public hearing, and one on solar energy systems. Elegant motion, but you get the idea.
I'll second that motion. I'll second that motion. All in favor? Oh, I did notice one other little thing, Jason, just the, um, in the, in this zoning ordinance, the, um, table of contents.
Mm-hmm, yeah, this is pages off right now.
Needs to be updated, so...
Yeah. Are you talking about the pages don't line up or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I already, I saw that the other day, but I will, uh...
And, and, and these changes will change it again.
Yeah.
So if we can get that streamed out.
Yeah.
That's a good catch, that's exactly the kind of thing we use all the work for.
Yeah. I don't know if we have to include that as a change to town meeting or not.
I think if we added new sections.
You, you know, do you hear what I'm saying on that, it's like...
I didn't hear what you said, no.
Do we have to propose changes to the table contents to the town meeting? Because it is a change to the hearing, to the zoning ordinance itself. Do you want to ask legal?
I will, I'll figure it out, I'll ask, I'll ask, yeah.
Just, just to cover us, I mean, I...
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will do that tomorrow, yeah.
I don't remember ever doing that before, but I wouldn't want to get this.
We did it on a, uh, I think when we added a whole new section. I remember we went to the end to do it, whichever one we were looking at, it might have been solar. And we went to the very last five-point whatever, chapter. But, you know, that's administrative.
Right.
Yeah, I'll play with that tomorrow.
So, and then at two weeks from today, we're looking at daycare and Pepin? And that's it, or?
That's it, I do have some greatest, a few greatest practical extents, but I've been pushing them off until, um, we got through this first. And I don't know how much time we're gonna need to, um, reserve.
Definitely get the daycare first on the...
Oh, for sure, and that's...
And the best practical locations, let's get those done, get those on the agenda.
You want me to put some best practical locations on there? Okay?
Oh, I mean, I don't want to...
I have one, I just talked to one today, I told him April sixth or whatever that is, this is first, and then I have another one, I'll call him and see if he's ready to go, and I can put him on for the, you know, it's always just preliminary, anyway. Let's get it started.
Yeah. I don't want to push him off too much if we can fit him in, I mean, just...
Yeah, I'll put him on, so then we'll have the daycare, and that's just gonna be a discussion again.
Yeah.
Um, and then the greatest practical extent, and then we'll deal with the Pepin's application and see how that, that goes forward. Um, in the folder, I did give you some stuff that he submitted, some of you guys picked up your stuff, some of you didn't. There's a letter in there, three rivers backed out, they don't, they don't want the property.
Yeah.
Um, and the, there's a letter in there stating that.
Yeah.
Uh, and then he came back with another letter trying to... You can read it. Yeah, exactly, it's the application thing, and he, you got it all now, he had it in last week, he wanted to get on this week's meeting, and I had to say no to him, um, because of this.
Yeah, well, it took some time.
Yeah, this is way more important.
And the workshop is to go over...
It's gonna have to be, well, we have to vote, we have to approve to send them to...
Warren Finance.
Yeah, so it's a workshop slash meeting or whatever it is.
Selectment, whichever one it is.
It has to go to the Warren Finance.
Can we have an official vote in a workshop?
I hope so.
I don't know if we can, actually.
I don't know.
Yeah, no, we don't usually vote at workshops, do we?
Can we skip, right, we don't.
Yeah.
Can we call it an extra meeting?
I'll have to find out tomorrow. But, yeah, it'd be just a change.
Yeah, if you can, make it a...
Because they're not reviewing it, the, the... Warren Finance is not reviewing it to the twentieth. I just need to get it to them a week in advance, so they can review it. Because if I don't, then, um, they're just, other powers won't be happy because they didn't get enough adequate time to review it. Which is fine, I understand that completely, but, and so, we'll meet again before then, so if we have to do it at a regular meeting and it's not, then it could just be on the sixteenth. You'll still approve them, but they'll have reviewed them before, I don't know how you guys do it. I'm still learning this town government.
Yeah, I'd say if you can make it an actual meeting instead of a workshop for next week, just do that, then we'll be able to vote.
Yeah. I'll talk to, I'll talk to the people who know more about it than I do. See ya. You ready?
All right, well...
Jim and I move, we adjourn and go watch the rest of the Bruins game.
Sounds good to me.
Well, you don't have to second the Bruins game.
I'll second the meeting adjournment.
All in favor? All right.